Alright, so at 6 o'clock, I guess we'll call the meeting to order. And I'll be ready for the motion to approve the minutes from July.
Okay, motion.
Steve's got the motion, is there a second? A second? Um, motion, Steve and Amy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host. Any requests to appear before the council? And are we gonna take the S- S-?
Eric. Well, you can take Eric if you want.
Well, I didn't know.
Yeah, 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 go ahead, that's fine. He does, he does care.
Okay, so you like this, uh?
I think we'll do, we'll do Eric.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I think we have a long time, so.
His report's shorter than yours.
Okay, I just put a, I brought a copy of the ordinance that they're sending out. It's the first one I filled out, it'll be around this week. This report is from, uh, July 16th to August 17th. We had, uh, 10 traffic warnings, five medical calls, four animal calls, nine public assists, three assist others, other agencies, 50 community policing calls, one citation for a noise ordinance. And then I wanted to ask the council, uh, the spotlight on, the squad is broken, I gotta get that fixed. And I wanted to talk, do you have to get council permission for selling the squad cars, the old ones?
We've already approved that, haven't we?
Did you?
We couldn't find the title.
Oh, we approve, uh?
Would you want, would you want, uh? Probably both, both of them I'd like to just sell them.
The one, uh... So you don't, you don't wanna use the second one as a backup, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, really.
Then, I would pick, pick one of them and sell them, you know, the other one we kept for a while.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I don't know.
Who wants to sell your backup? Not with the way parts are available for the explorers.
Oh, okay.
You could be down, that main squad could be down a week.
Oh, okay, I didn't know they were having troubles, uh, with trouble with parts, so.
I got a brand new, I got the, it's got like four recalls on it. Well, three of the things, their software update stuff, but, you know, or some switch or something, that's, who knows?
Oh, and both, that's gotta come on from wherever it is. Okay, well, then we'll just sell that one, and then the sale of the motorcycle, but I gotta talk to Jason about that to make sure that I do that properly. And I was just gonna sell them both at the same time, advertise them both on the same, uh, ad in the paper, and then on Facebook. That's probably, and then the last thing, part is the ordinance, it has a picture, it shows who it is, and a picture of what it is at their property. The dates we reviewed. And then, I didn't put the reinspection date on there, I didn't put that on yet before I sent it out, but I'll be signing it, put that on there before I send it out. That's what they'll look like, there's a picture of all the stuff that's, that's addressed on the property will be with each ordinance that I'm sending out, so.
So how many days do they have to respond?
I think it's fifteen, fifteen is it, fifteen days?
Some of them are fifteen, and then, that one, the one that Allison did was ten. And you're not saying that one here, I don't think, but, uh...
It says 10 days. If the owner of any property fails to comply with 10 days of their publication, Street Commissioner shall cut and removes such weeds.
That's, yeah, that's the weed one, but the other one, it's stored in your property in open areas, if that's what this other one is, is. That one is, that one, yeah, that one's 10 days also, pretty sure.
Okay, oh, they're all 10, okay.
Yeah, but, so like, when you, you've got three different ones here, so that the one, the 200 ones are gonna have one... I don't know if they're all 10, but I mean, the, uh, the 200, the 200's one, and that weed one, apparently wherever Janice just read, they're 10.
That was just sent by the subdivision 3 on the third page, top 3 year license.
Yeah, so that must be the 300's one, I don't know if the 800's one is longer.
Yeah, I guess I'll have to double check that one.
And then, like, on this vehicle, you're sending that to the property owner, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think we should be sending a second notice, the, the way the heat is on us to get properties cleaned up. I think it's dragged out, not like they're expelled for over a year. I think we need to get properties cleaned up.
The one down on South Third Street there, he just, he's got another letter giving him extra time now. Got that from Jason, so, because he couldn't get it out in time, so. He got the other truck out of there, but not that, there's one still sitting there, that he was still digging the wheels out of the ground, so, they've been sitting there so long, so. So that's, we need to report.
Alright, thank you. Okay, now.
Alright, thanks for having us again, I think it's been 15 months, uh, last time I was here in May, we, we talked about doing some sort of a workshop, update meeting. Uh, the, uh, engineering report that we've been working on, but we have kind of oriented towards maybe an update of all the projects we've had going on in, in town here. Rachel's working on some stuff, uh, we've had a couple of ones completed this last, last spring, and not really, plan to talk about those too much, but, uh, we can just do a summary of some of the things that we, we've got going on, or, or different phases, so. First, go through the funding here, uh, our funding specialist could be here tonight, Kristen Prasowski is our funding specialist, she's from town here. She's had a workshop going on this week, but, um, she did provide me a, a memo with some possible funding sources towards projects that we've discussed in previous meetings. That could include, uh, the water treatment plants, and street utility at work, trails, sidewalks, and campgrounds. Uh, this is kind of along with, I do wanna bring Kristen in here, obviously doing these programs more specifically. But I just wanted to kind of provide that at this time, so maybe September meeting, October meeting, or a worst case, and then, uh, we can bring her in to talk about programs more, more, more detailed. But I'll get into the USBA World Development stuff, a little bit more thoroughly, is that a nice, uh, some of the work that we are going on, uh, that is going on now, so. Just kind of look through that real quick. The T-Chain 3 levee project, uh, it's Rachel's project, I kinda wonder if I can talk through where that's at, and status and all that kind of stuff.
Sure, uh, yes, it's been a while since I've been here, and, um, since I've been here, we kind of hit a major milestone, and that was submitting an application to the Army Corps to basically ask for permission to modify the levee. Uh, since it was built as a federal project, you have to get a section 408 permit from them before any of the actual work can happen. So that's, um, that was submitted at the end of June. That submittal consisted of roughly 50 or 60% design plans of the levee modifications. Nothing has changed in the design of the levee since, like, the previous time I was here, it's a shift south of about 120 feet. And by doing that, we're able to more or less eliminate any impacts to residential properties along 93. Um, there's a flood wall on the west side of 93 that will be constructed between the creek and the highway. And then it's an earthen levee on the east side of 93, tying that into the existing levee. There's a block border across 93, convey the city park creek flows. Those are kind of the elements of the project, again, nothing really substantially has changed on, since I've presented, like, previous concepts. But the submittal to the Corps was a substantial one, um, we did deliver the direct plans, but also all of our supporting calculations for the flood wall of the levee, and that, hydraulics and whatnot, so it was a big package, that's why I was saying it was a substantial milestone, um, getting that out the door. And the response that I got from the Corps was, "Thank you, we are out of funding for this program, and we don't get new funding until October." And so, um, they have our submittal. There is an option to try to help them prioritize this project review, you know, get it ahead of others in the line. But given where things are on the highway project, I don't feel like it's necessary to do that, I think if they begin their review in October, we're still okay for the overall project timeline. So we haven't pushed them yet. Again, I don't, in my opinion, I don't think it's necessary to do that, um, right now, so. That's kind of the thing, so, and then, uh, our next deliverable, things have been really quiet, I mean, the last invoice we sent was a really small one, um, for kind of odds and ends coordination with the Corps after that big submittal. Uh, I don't expect there to be really any work going on over the next month or so. And then, when we get into mid-September and October, we'll start going again and advancing the plans further, so that when the highway project has an official 60% submittal, our plans are up to the same level, and really, it's a matter of making them look good to meet MINDOT's standards. The design is there, it's a matter of, like, plant production, so. That, I'm expecting that to be the next push, um, and so it'll be October time frame, based on what I know about the hierarchy of schedule.
Are they still set to begin sometime next year on construction?
I haven't been able to get an official, and I don't think you have either, official new schedule from MINDOT. I don't, it's not gonna be a spring let-in, I mean, I don't think that's practical at this point. But I think they're still trying to target a fall letting, but it's probably a question of best answer by now. And we've been, we have been asking for new schedules. Yeah, any other questions?
So it's 94 that this project is supposed to start?
25.
Right.
Supposed to be done by 24?
Yeah, well, uh...
So the bid letting, you're talking about the...
It might, it might be fall, fall of 23.
So the project will be done by the end of 24?
That's what it's supposed to be done, unless they get, unless they get some kind of, uh, extension, but I did have to get that to the let it budget. But they're like anybody else, they had money in for the bonding bill and for whatever else that, you know, still sitting in limbo, so. Same thing with the county, I mean, the county, county has still got money requested in that bonding bill, which they think is gonna get approved whenever, whenever they give it session again to do something, but can't make sure Rachel was ready, I think Tim doesn't anticipate the start. Bid letting until at least March, for the count of six, and that's supposed to go with the first, so.
And did they get all the easements that they needed, or they're still working on that too?
MINDOT?
Yeah, for 93?
MINDOT's got some, but no other still.
They really haven't been in contact with, uh, the property owners on 93. It's been very poor at best.
So MINDOT's, yeah, taken the lead with the property acquisitions and the easements and stuff. Um, I've only been involved in, like, the direct conversations around the levee area and, um, the rupture area, just because I'm working on something down there, but, yeah, it's ongoing, I mean, I think that's the best answer I could ever get.
Alright, well, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Do you want me to save for anything else?
It's okay.
I'm gonna save for a little bit more, I...
Uh, the rest is gonna rain, I realize that it's something that gets ready to get this, so I sent it out a little while ago, so. There's a lot of pages here, I'm not expecting to read through all this, I'm gonna try to get through it a little more in a summary here, so. Uh, the first headline here, the water pilot study, which we played last year, there's no more work occurring on that project that was, uh, completed and reviewed in, uh, at a meeting in November, just a reminder on that project, we had cut with a project cost of $5.65 million for a new water treatment plant, it's a filter plant. With the cost increases we've seen this last year, uh, I would expect that to be a higher number than that today. And we did a filter plant in the spring, that was just the filter itself, it's double the price that it had been the year prior, so. We're probably expecting that to be a higher cost fix on that, uh, of course, when the project goes to construction, maybe some of those prices are back to normal, but, um, I don't assume things will ever get cheaper, so hopefully it will happen, but I don't think it'll happen, so. Uh, that's, still had a pretty large on contingency in our estimate, I think we had a 25% contingency in there, so it still could be relatively close. But, uh, just, just to kind of keep that in mind. Uh, so after, so after we submitted that water pilot study, we, uh, reoriented ourselves towards the preliminary engineering report, and just to make a reminder on that, so the preliminary engineering report is something that is put together when you're seeking funding through USBA World Development. It's a required document, it's got cost estimates, different options that were reviewed. The pilot study would be attached to that for anything that would pertain to the water treatment plant. Uh, and then we go through, uh, potential improvements to sanitary sewer collection, water distribution, storm sewer, streets, those kind of things. And, uh, when we first looked at that, we were trying to do a bonding bill request for May, uh, and decided not to do that, so we really haven't been putting much effort into it since that time. We have done some water main, water main modeling, that's most of what we've done, and we've done some cost estimates. But, uh, and then also have the projects put onto the product priority list through the, uh, through PCA, so PCA Department Health. So that just kind of gets it in front of those two, uh, the PCA and the, uh, Department Health, so they know the projects could be, could be coming forth in the future. Uh, when it becomes a project, we do scoring on it, and it gets put onto, it's called an intended use plan, so. We aren't quite at that point of looking at that, but it's just kind of something that would be renewed on a annual basis until it becomes an actual project. So in February this year, we did contact World Development to discuss, uh, user rates, so if you proceed with World Development, uh, you will have to adjust your user rates, those sewer water rates for, for everybody in town to hit 1.5% in the median household income. At that meeting in February, we discussed a gradual increase up to $88 per, per month, or four years, or five years, somewhere in that range. That's even 2019 median household income, which is what we were told to use back in February. It is possible, recent discussions with World Development, um, they've, they haven't instituted the 20, 2019 rates quite yet. They may still allow 2010 rates to be used for a while, which in that scenario, uh, those rates would be about 20% lower if they do allow that, because your 2010 median household income was about $54,000 versus $70,000 than it was in 2019. But they don't have any clear answer unfortunately on that, because they are waiting direction from, from the federal side of things. But, uh, I would assume 2019 rates at this point until, until otherwise, because usually it's when the money is secured, which won't happen in two or three months, it's something that would take, take longer than that. So, uh, what we've been doing is kind of oriented ourselves towards the projects, and I can point you to a map at the back here, probably at exhibit four or towards the end, or five, five shows an area of utility that was shown on there, so basically the last sheet in the document shows the area, which is easy to follow, but these are the areas of town that we show have a, um, water main, with water main being kind of the driver of the street project, uh, being four inches or smaller. And everything else in town, it's maybe six inches or larger ductile iron or PVC pipe. So these are kind of the remaining areas of town that need water main upgrades, that's just water main itself. Uh, there's a tailpipe on Ninth Street and South End here by the school, and so that was, I believe, put in, went to increase pressure for the school by understanding currently on. So there's, there is an eight-inch PVC pipe that runs along, it's not a four-inch, and so what about that, does that say a need to switch over, could be, could be determined still. But, uh, that, that yellow area is what we determine to be the project area, if you do a street project concurrent with, um, the part of the preliminary engineering report. Those are, that's the need. So, uh, if that is the case, what we want to do is, was proceed with the, with the engineering study or preliminary report, is be able to, uh, decide, yes, that is the project, um, and then what would you do with that improvement, so is it just a remove and replace, put it back so it looks identical like it is today? But you're putting in the utilities, or do you wanna make some street improvements, I do have a panel listed different items on here. Uh, you could phase it and say, we're gonna do a water treatment plant first, and then a couple of years later, we can come back and do a street project and take care of the last bit of water main. That could certainly be a priority, being the water treatment plant, um, you can decide if you want to do it all at one time, uh, that's gonna dictate, take, take, probably a bunch of money, I mean, if it's $11 million improvements, which is what we're kind of at with our total cost estimate, doesn't mean you can afford to do 10 or $11 million at one time. If you want to expand those water improvements, some of the things we have talked about, uh, before is either you just remove, or the old water main, or you want to add maybe water main roofing, or, or things like that, I know there's some, some issues in some areas getting that to work, typographically, a second pipe up to the, um, up to some of these upper neighborhoods could have, could have issues with, uh, making sure that flows down the wrong direction, uh, we can keep things, uh, working, um, but, uh, those are some things to be kind of determined. And, uh, if you wanna make a change in these streets, the streets that are in these yellow areas are pretty much, they're about 24 feet wide, locked up, uh, fairly narrow. If that's what you'd want to increase or change, again, it's mostly just for cost estimates. Adding curb, these streets don't have curb, we, on the 2020 project, added in a flat ribbon curb in a lot of these areas. That was to control the edge, but also allows the transition where we can use a barrier curb down to a, a flat curb in some areas, because it really forms store, uh, in that area. And then, uh, whether or not, uh, some torrential improvements should be considered instead or prioritized, so. When I say torrential, it, it means, uh, usually cured in place by lining is one option, not the slip lining that was done on the previous, uh, project that we took out. There's also pipe bursting, with a drainage pipe into the old pipe, and then just making services into it, and, uh, there's also directional drilling, that's not right in mind there too. So we do have cost estimates, so, uh, that area, yellow, here's a yellow we highlighted, uh, we assumed about 28 foot streak going in, and, uh, removal or replacement of utilities, um, of the current standard, and, uh, it's a minimum, but, uh, four and a half million dollar project cost estimate. So together with the water plant, about $10 to $11 million. And, um, I have a huge reminder, we're not doing a file design documents, basically, uh, very tight overview, what a project could look like, what the costs would be, that would be, what we put into the preliminary engineering report, so. Uh, we don't give you the details of where, where things are exactly necessarily, but we're trying to make sure all the costs are covered, and, um, those improvements are, are shown at least in, in scope for, for future, future design. So that sanitary over here, that's the whole design?
Yeah, the sanitary 58, 69, we're in and placed. Only thing I'm sure is, will we just place?
So you have no idea what condition that's in?
Same condition, it's just a matter of whether the soil was better when they put it in, and it just happens to not have any infiltration or infill, same company for all of them.
Yeah, I give it in the next section here a little bit. So this water main is main, could be put in and leave the old stuff in and go in directions boring, and, uh... It, it's possible, some of the, some of the work we're showing on here, uh, that's, well, there's dual water main, might be able to switch services over to a larger main, abandon a four-inch one, so long as your service is still kept up. An eight-inch should be appropriated, uh, for that purpose, um, and then other areas, I look at, uh, look at a map here, but... If we're getting at any of the old system, it was, you know, they could be putting in the new while they own the store. Well, absolutely, yeah, it, well, we always do, we tend to do temporary water main, when we do water main projects, so they'll lay out a two-inch water main, so we can connect them in. So I mean, that, that part is, is not as huge of an issue, but in some of these areas like the Ninth Street, where there's a lot of water main here, there's not a lot of services on it. On the west side specifically, uh, directional drilling, putting the water main on the east side of the road, maybe catch the services over, like, digging into the street. And only a couple of them to take care of, now that street's not in great condition, so that's not what I'd be worried about trying to preserve, but, but, uh, yeah, I think we, the, the idea is being that we can look at directional drilling in some areas that you don't have to dig up, the street's in decent shape, why do you know what they have to do, because it's not simply more cost.
So the last time you were here, Chris, um, I asked you to look at the water pressure issue, um, on Turner Drive into that new addition, is that looked at at all?
So I did talk to my person who's into water main modeling, um, she is running into some issues with the water system model, basically, it's, it needs some refinement, so there's some things we need to add into it. And so, uh, that's kind of my thanks here, is if you want us to keep looking at larger system improvements, we can continue doing that, but what we need to do is, we probably need to do a little more field testing, but, um, we need probably more information on some of the pressure reducing stations and some other things, because we can put all the numbers into it, and we showed this CAD model, and it's, uh, glass is, it doesn't work, so we can run the model, it just, it needs some more input into it before it gives us a good result, so. Uh, that's what we do wanna do, but I just wanna make sure we have clarification, that's something we wanna proceed with.
Well, the only reason I bring it up, so I understand that there were some adjustments to the pressure reducing station, or some valves or something, but, um, as of two weeks ago, we could stand on a five-inch, uh, supply line, and we could clamp it off.
Okay.
Now, have you fixed anything since then?
That's it.
Since two weeks ago, have you fixed anything since then?
I haven't adjusted it since two weeks ago, no.
So, then what happened from when you adjusted it to?
From...
Like, why is it, why is it back to low pressure again?
Uh, the station must be not open enough to the big, um, pressure side again.
So that's got nothing to do with modeling, that's just got to do with...
That's with the reducing station, yes.
So you gotta, so you gotta fix the guts of the reducing station or repair that, you can model until you're broke, the one that's not gonna change that?
Right. So that's probably something...
It's a maintenance issue?
That needs to be done soon, because we have a fire up here, if you guys get all the water, that's very critical, but...
If we have a fire up there tonight, we'll be all on water.
Yeah, so, as, as far as the project goes, we did have a line item in there for, basically improvements of the water. Age of pressure reducing areas, so we do have a cost in there, it's only some friends you take care of now, and then there's, I mean, there's one with that one specifically, but, uh, but yeah, if, if, if any of those kind of things have been done, you set a line item in there, it needs to, it needs to be addressed, but, um, yeah, we're, the, the, the pressure reducesations are one thing, and, uh, I, I guess, I'm just, the models need some refinement before I can tell you what things should look like, but if you're, you've got to experience real life, experience what's happening out there, it needs work for sure, so.
Yeah, but it's just, that's, that's a maintenance issue, it's not a long-term issue, so it's not, you, you need to just get fixed, okay?
Yeah, that's, that's why I haven't, we haven't spent more time on that yet, because if you're looking, if you decide to do a project where you're saying, we're just replacing the four-inch main, eight-inch main, or six-inch main, there's no reason for us to spend time and money on, on doing modeling, so that's why, that's one thing.
Or would, is that what you do here, I mean, would, would you just use that eight-inch main where it's running parallel?
That the potential is just to run, to switch the services over, assuming they weren't put onto that eight-inch main when it was installed originally. Uh, 'cause I think that eight-inch main must go up Eighth Street here, if that's correct.
Yeah, then it goes to Apple Street, then it comes to Ninth Street?
Yeah, so I, I believe that, I assume those services were switched over, at least on that street, to that new main.
I don't know, were they?
Yes, sir. So you might have already done it. So you might have already done it, so we're showing this, this red water main or this smaller water main over on Ninth Street. It might only be that you need to do one block of that because you've got a parallel switch over. And there's no longer a need to do that water main. There's still a Saint Mary's sewer on the street, but from a water perspective, you may not need that pipe. There's a couple of blocks there that are running parallel to it. And so those are the kind of things I would kind of like to work.
Very important for a large project. That would all probably be a little bit of savings.
Yep, so I think we can shrink it down some. And so as a road development project has two components, one being the pipe itself and the second being the restoration above it. So when you dig in a pipe using road development funding, they'll take twenty feet of trench wood over top. They'll say that's fundable through us. If there is grant funding available for it, they might pay to basically reconstruct the street. You have twenty-four of the streets, you take out twenty feet of it, you've got a new street now. So, and they do a three quarters, if the three quarters of the street is skirt, they'll pay for the entire street, which is the scenario again. So if there's a need to reconstruct Saint Mary's sewer or water main mills, they could be eligible for, for funding through their program. So that'll be something to look at and also wait to what I can decide to do a trenchless improvement versus a.
My, oh, yeah, the reason why, why we'd have to wind those streets up there anymore than what they are.
I don't think it needs curb or, I mean, I don't know why it would. There's no, there's no drain, there's one on Maple.
The only thing that would have to.
And that's it. There's one, well, there is one on the corner of Eighth and Minnesota too.
Yeah, and the inclusion of curb does change the drainage pattern and how things work. So you need to add intakes and things like that. There's no storm sewer up there now. Or there is, there are a little storm sewer culverts, small things like that. It mostly looks like just kind of drainage, people's backyards, makes it through the woods, eventually makes its way down to the high.
The only thing would be the corner of Minnesota and Ninth Street there, there needs to be something designed differently than what we got there. That water runs across whatever is used along there or.
Yeah, the wa, the water pattern, if you, if you went to the original water pattern on Minnesota Street, all is supposed to go to the east.
And then it goes downward or seventh there or someplace or.
Right, it hits, it hits that alley between Seventh and Eighth.
There's that valley between.
Yeah, and there could be some, some changes when you put curbs around. I would say that I think the curve, it just needs.
I mean, if, if you, if you try to get back to historic drainage on some of those, I mean, now you're ending up with a fairly large ditch. I mean, you're ending up with a ditch similar to one like, like Jerry Tremble's in between, you know, some long time.
All it has to be is a storm sewer sort of line.
Right.
Up to where it comes out here.
So then you would need, that's what I'm saying, then in some of those places, you would need a storm sewer. And if you're going to have a storm sewer, the only way you can get it there is through curb and gutter, right?
No, you could have little area drains.
The, the only water you got to worry about is what's on the east, the west side of Ninth on the corner when it comes through there. I think we set up, the way I understand it, like we have a rug here. It was kind of just a leaching area, that ditch.
Well, you could have some water that would have came off of Shepherd, but not much. But somewhere in there on, on Ninth Street between Maple and Minnesota, there must be a break where some of that goes back to that Minnesota drain that goes to the east and the rest of it goes to the, to the south because.
There's too much fall weight out here to get it to go south unless you did.
Yes, somewhere, somewhere there must be a break there because those culverts by that poach and whatever are supposed to catch some drainage coming from, from the north. But where that break is, no idea.
I don't think it's very far.
Yeah, Rachel did tell me to say. Yeah, because we, we have, we talked about like April twenty twenty, we did a, so we looked off the town and looked at all the storage infrastructure that was in place. And then we did the drainage area, the issues.
So you've got, so you've got it, we've negotiated somewhere.
Yeah, so I can share that with you, Chris.
Yeah, I did love there a little earlier today. We presented it to council.
Great, oh, there is a cove that goes down here more or less by where Conrad, where that property lined in between Conrad and Storage. There's that cove right there that, I don't think anybody, we have talked to people, they've never seen water run south through there yet, so. It's got to be, either that pipe is plugged or, or it is off or something happened there. The rest of it that way from Maple goes straight south.
Yeah, so kind of what I'm talking about here, the, the good idea probably, as I said, hash out your council meeting with myself and James or Steve or whoever else is going to get together.
It sounds like Rachel's reading, I mean, you already got it, you've got some of it somewhere.
And so what I'm, what I'm getting at is, we have problems. So if you've got a water flood or drain or sits somewhere, or whatever it is after the rains.
But I mean, right now though, with, with those storage sheds and whatever, just in the process of getting finalized, we're not going to know until after they're in place, whether that changed drainage pattern or anything. I mean, we're just going to have to wait and see.
Well, after the last rain, the ditch was half full. I mean, the dogs were swimming in it, it was full.
Yeah, so that's.
I mean, it wasn't full, but it was.
It's still like the water before, what some people told me to, but it's kind of leaches away.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not new. And it's gone within a day.
Yeah, so if you're, if you're going to get that to flow, then where he's talking about on that ninth, that's kind of what Steve was saying. Then you'd have to, you'd have to put some type of storm sewer in there and that storm sewer would have to go to that alley. And, but, but that alley right now is just an open ditch. I mean, so if, if you're, if, if this is.
It basically looks like a waterway right now.
Yeah, so, 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 so if right now that, that ditch between Minnesota and Maple, or now it's not even the full length of it. But if that's still, basically the ditch is, is serving as a pond until it leaches out through that little, that little hole in that culvert there. I mean, if you open that up, that's going to change, you know, how, how fast or the utilization of that, of that open ditch now in that, in that alley, so.
Yeah, changing drainage patterns, even if you're improving drainage patterns, changes, if you put an intake in it, it's going to get somewhere a lot faster. Water now slowly making its way through, so you might have a problem somewhere else. So we'd have to make sure that.
Yeah, I mean, now, if you put that all in there, it's going to be dry in front of the full block of Minnesota. It's going to be dry in that half a block on Ninth Street, but who knows how fast that ditch is going to fill up. And even if you can take it on the out way and, you know.
The catch, basically, on this side brought out to a certain height so that the ditch could hold some water because I thought the moment at once could get.
Project made particular quality site because it goes right down.
Yeah, and if you have a drain under it, just make sure it drains well.
Yeah, there's some of the ways that Panamander went through that. That's making some, Rachel, why don't you get together a little more on that? Just kind of go through that, so. So just, just a couple of things that we just kind of talked about. So for purposes of our review and cost estimates for kind of some of the streets go back as they are today with life, kind of silly location. Take that as for purpose of cost estimates and perhaps some longer improvement. So is that, is that accurate from here to say?
I think so.
And then we'll look at any, any tender improvement that could be part of that. So anything we're talking about for storm sewer, just here, where it would be essentially a loan, three years, three year loan alone. They don't cover anything related to storm sewer. Doesn't mean there's not another program that we look at or something else that might, might be relevant. But it would not be something that they would be grant for, but you potentially qualify for a low interest loan through road development.
There's not, I don't know, they need funding programs that will cover storm sewer. So even like if it's a water resources focused grant program, it won't necessarily cover storm sewer.
If there's a element to improve storm water quality, it might be something that could happen. So if it's putting in a filtration basin or something to that effect, you might be able to qualify for some sort of funding mechanism for that.
And I was going to bring that up here and talk about Minnesota tonight. I mean, if you guys are okay with having a designated area where some water is retained intentionally, you know, for a short period, that we, and you could put a water quality spin on it, it would open up the door to a lot more money opportunities. Something to keep in mind.
Right, it'd be, you know, basically be able to keep buying a lot better.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, we go through some thing, what programs or something there? Otherwise, the only thing that's, I know, I had some in the next section here, but a lot I mentioned, once we made a couple of weeks ago, that INI is kind of, you're seeing some INI resources that you weren't seeing last year. And so what we've been kind of looking at is the water treatment plants, water main improvements, and that's the project I've got highlighted in yellow. But it doesn't mean that that addresses your Saint Mary's sewer collection system. We probably address this collection system on the streets, but that does not take care of obviously a lot of stuff. Back in two thousand, I guess it's early two thousand twenty, we had reviewed all the Saint Mary's annals in town. So we opened every Saint Mary's annal that could be opened, I guess. We started doing an INI study that we were pretty encouraged to do. We did open every annal, look at what kind of pipes are connected. So we do a decent idea of what kind of pipes you have out here. I'd say this is an area, and Jean had included two, I believe it's a primed top plate pipe. It's not in the river bottom like the previous project, but it certainly has its own issues and has contributed to your INI. So the project we've identified is a water main improvement project, but would there be any desire to increase that into a collection system upgrade or anything like that? We, we were initially starting to look at that a couple of years ago, we took a pause, did the twenty twenty project. INI drops dramatically in twenty twenty-one, but it sounds like it's going back.
I guess my response to that is, how do, how do, how do we know that? My, my, you know, my initial feeling would be that the INI isn't coming from someplace else. I just, I don't, I think whatever INI is there is still coming from that same geographic area that we, that we just fixed. And so, and, you know, when we first started with the INI study, we were talking about the, potentially at some point in the future, because we knew we weren't going to adjust the services. I mean, all the services down there still have INI. I mean, we didn't, so I, you know, I, I think we do need to do some INI, more INI stuff, but somehow we have to determine where it's coming from. I mean, if it's, if it's coming from the area that we're just fixing or just fixed, I, I don't, I don't see a big advantage to going somewhere else because even if we find INI at a higher level, that's not going to be affected by Minnesota River, which I don't, I think, I think probably the first thing we've got to do, and I don't, you know, Gene doesn't have time to look at it yet, is to try to figure out if the May and June flows, when we ended up with a hundred and thirty thousand daily average and a hundred and seventy thousand peaks, which are over, over twice as much as what we're, what we're pumping. I think we have to figure out where, where that is. I mean, and, and now I don't know, you know, we're, we're too late again. I mean, now, now we're back down to where we're in the seventies again and we don't know, you know, we, we didn't jump on it in May and June when the levels were up there. I mean, it's something we somehow should have checked and we didn't, you know, so. And I, I also don't know if, you know, you've, you've TV'd some of GM's work.
Yeah.
Or you've, you've checked it more than once, right?
There's, there's post tunnelizing that was done this spring after it was installed. So it was not, so it was all done in the fall, the sewers installed in the fall, it came back next spring and did all the tunnelizing on the sewer mains.
Which would have been in two thousand and.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. So there's been no follow-up on two thousand and twenty-two, so we don't necessarily even know that if, if someone there. I mean, all it's going to take is, is one, one faulty, one faulty pipe when the river levels are high for that, for that infiltration level to jump substantially. So somehow we got to get back, we've got to get, and you know, James mentioned something about, did you ever do those manhole monitoring things that you were talking about doing at one point?
So that's, we talked about doing some manhole monitoring as part of the INI project, but when we kind of paused that, we, we, we started working on that in March two thousand twenty. We, obviously a lot of things happened at that point, we paused it, went oriented towards the twenty twenty project, the project we went to construction with. And we've not come back to that INI study. We are seeing a pretty big reduction, so we did not put flow meters in, if that's what you're referring to, I think that's what you're referring to.
Right, what, what are, is that what you're talking about, James?
Yeah, the flow meters, individual manholes.
So, so how, is there a way that we can do that in a half a dozen of those lower individual manholes?
So we do flow monitoring, we usually break up the area into zones so we can kind of figure out how much water is going in and out of each zone. So we try to kind of strategize where those would be in place, if we'd be putting one at the beginning of that project and one at the end of the project and just kind of seeing how much is coming from that area. That's certainly done, a lot of stuff, the confluence of a lot of your sewer, sewers coming in at the intersection of Third Street with the Main Street. So a lot of stuff coming in multiple directions, we'd have to, to, I imagine those are a few, three different ways, but we have not done that. It's not part of our street project, but it's part of that INI project, that's something that is certainly to be done.
But if, I mean, if you did that for, we're in August now, I mean, what would it take to do that for eight months?
Normally, the, normally the review periods aren't that long. And I could bring over INI people, see how we're kind of doing. I did, I did this myself, I was sitting in Kido, doing all flow monitoring, putting meters, all that kind of stuff. And we typically did it for a couple of weeks at a time, but we're reviewing during different periods. If you get into spring, hopefully you're going to get flood events. But you do in the winter, you're kind of getting your base flow, you're figuring out how much water should be coming through. Which right now, I think all you do monitoring is essentially your base flow, your traffic show, really much INI at all. But if you said we have a wet period every spring, we want to kind of see what's going through the system in these areas, it'd be kind of being ready for that to occur.
I, I, I get that, but if we don't have, if you don't have something in place, when it's hap, I mean, if, if we knew exactly when this was going to happen in April, May and June, you know, we, we would have done something the day, the day it happened. I mean, you know, so if, to me, if you do it after the fact, you're chasing your tail and you haven't figured anything else out. And now, now we're, now we're back to, let's do an overall INI study and finally know that there's INI there. We know we've got a sewer, the rest of the sewer main in town that haven't been fixed are sixty, seventy years old. We, we know all that, I mean, I don't, I don't, you know, but we don't know right now is, or what we don't know is how, how effective really has this existing project been? We know when the, we know when the water table is low and there's either no rain or no high water or no, or the river's not high. We know that everything works, but, or not everything works, but we know that we've got a flow that matches, matches our, our water production. So yeah, I understand that it, it takes, that if, that if you're not doing it all the time, you're selectively picking, but, but if you pick after the fact, what good does it do you?
No, I agree, so I think if you're trying to identify how much INI is in the twenty twenty project, the one we just completed, if that's your concern, or if that's what you want to look at first, is how much INI is coming out of that area? If we put flow monitoring monitors on right now, I'm sure we're going to see very minimal, but it'd be determined when we do want to do it. So we can't go back in time, like you said, figure out what's already been done. But if you said, we want to see what happens in two thousand twenty-three, the project we did three years prior, how much improvement is made? We could, we could set up meters, beginning the project, end of the project, what's the difference flow? We could, we set it up for a month or two months, that's a longer period, but we can check that against water sales so we know how much water was.
But I guess I'm saying it should be done, needs to be done for nine months, doesn't need to be done for a month.
Okay, and it can be done that long.
I mean, what is it, is that something that you have to do or is that something James can do?
Yeah, I mean, we do it, James, I'm sure there's some companies who can find to do it. The meters are a fairly expensive product to rent for that long period of time.
Like what, I mean, what's expensive?
I can tell you, I can go the flow.
You don't?
Yeah, there's different types of meters, there's pressure transducers or some of that are wider, and I'm sure they get fairly expensive, so.
But yeah, I guess, three, if you're fairly expensive, it's three or four hundred dollars a month and, and we can't find anything, that's one thing. But if it's five thousand dollars a month, yeah, that's, that's another thing. But if it's $5,000 a month, yeah, that's, that's another thing. I mean, but I mean, what, what range are we in, you think?
I can answer that, yeah.
So you don't know any?
Well, we, I mean, we can, it's, it's essential to know what the contractor can that does that.
So maybe it's something that's.
Good idea.
Yeah, we could probably, of course, for us to do, like, try to get a way to take to, if you decide to engage directly with, like, Floptower or one of those other companies.
I mean, so that's not just something that if, if we know we've got a substantial INI problem we're going to have for a long time, that's not just something that we can just buy something and move it wherever we want to move it?
You could. Um, but yeah. No?
No. He teaches in Rochester.
Oh, so you told me to be here, it's out of that.
Okay. Uh.
Do you hope, uh, off the street?
Yeah, you did.
Do you need to come with us, or?
Uh, I, I think we're just going to go ahead and set something up to vacate it.
I doubt, you want, he's vacating the show of the street, or you got, I'm sure.
All right, got it, but if you want to lay it here, that's fine.
At the East Street there. From us, this, this from there, that, right here, that's Cables, that's my parents'.
Mm-hmm.
That's the street from there, there, that's St. Joseph's.
Okay.
This is behind my house, that's already being vacated. We did that before, and that's recorded.
On South Street, right?
Yeah, well, no, this is in front of my house. This is my house, and behind my house, there used to be a road there that we had that vacated.
That was, that was actually, this is really in South Street, that was actually South Street.
Okay, that's the one.
You want it from here to there?
Right, yeah.
Or wherever it is.
Right, yeah, it just ends right here, this is school here, so that's South Street, but that's.
Yeah, okay.
Great, nice, yep.
We work with folks that do the flow monitoring. I think that they have the contacts where they actually like lease all the equipment as well. It'd be like, maybe have our option of purchasing it. I don't have a big internal tax, but we can at least go over them, look them over. I was curious, have you guys done any smoke testing, or?
We, we have it now.
Did you smoke us, uh, seven years ago? Well, we did it in Main Street, yeah.
Okay, just eliminated, I mean, that's the only thing that we do at our bureau tour, is the smoke testing to help pinpoint where do you have those connections that shouldn't be there if inflow is the main issue, not necessarily.
Well, I guess my main issue now would be eliminating the idea that we just spent however much money on doing a sewer project. Eliminating the idea that it's, it's not the same place that we just fixed. I mean, so whatever the most cost-effective, simplest way to do that is, and, and we're not, now, I think, you say this gets, GM's gets done on November or whatever. If there's some faulty, faulty pipe in there, if there was a connection that's busted, it's done, whatever. We're not going to, we're not going to see that, based on the flow that's there right now. We're not going to see that until next April, you know, so. And I'll use an example, if for some reason the cap down at Denver Park, whatever, is not, we know that was a messed up area, but for some reason that's not working very well, I don't know, we're not, it's, it's not something I don't think we're going to be able to TV by and identify and point our finger at GM and say, this is messed up, you know? And we're not going to be able to do that now, I don't think, wherever these issues are, until the next time we see the problem, which is probably not going to be until next spring, if we even see it then. And, but before we jump around to an overall community-wide INI study, I, I think we need to go to the project that we're doing right now and make sure everything there is good.
Yeah, so like I said, the, the project that's completed, we go to the right away. Obviously, the right way to house was not done. That's usually a very large contributor to INI, is going to be the service line. So if people have roof trains connected, if they got some pumps connected, well, I'm sure your organization, they can't have, it's not there until you've checked. So that's one thing that you can do is telvis. We did do two-way cleanouts when we did our project, so you can telvis from the street to the house without having to go in their basements. South of, the south side of the project, we covered mostly PVC, schedule 40 services. I would assume most of those are probably okay structurally, but whether they have a cross connection, or if they've changed from PVC to clay to whatever next to the house, we don't know that. There could be a big break in a roof going through. We've got some, some drain tile that goes through the alley connected to it. We don't know that, because we only went within that street corridor. So that's one thing that needs to be done, is to telvis from the, in that project area, telvis from the street up to the house. And so you do have the ability to do that, just because it's a cleanout, so you don't have to make a, do a major project necessarily ahead of that. Smoke testing can be done as well. We do it, I know Rural Water, a lot of times we'll help out with that. If you're a member of Minnesota Rural Water, there's some things they can do as, as regular memberships, as members of Rural Water. So that is, it's always worth contacting them as well, because there's a lot of things they'll do for meetings like this that they'll do no charge, so. I would certainly encourage talking to them about that, too. And then, yeah, the flow monitors that we kind of talked about is the other thing, how much water's going in, how much water's going out. And if it's proportionately larger, how much water's being used by the people in the neighborhood, you know who got sourced, so INI still to take care of. But if you want to, that's part of the normal construction project, we install the pipe, we do the telvising the next year to review the work that was done. At that time, the, the work was, was good. There was one repair that had been made from the telvising company, that they did a fiber reinforced patch at one manhole. So we could ask them to review that work and make sure that's holding up, and it just, that'd be like Empire. So that's something we're looking to request right now. The contractor doesn't have a, the contractor, the contract doesn't require the contractor to go back and check the work the second year, they already done it once. So if you wanted to review again, they would just be, you'd be paying for a telvising company to come out again and review it. So there was a pay item originally in the contract to telvis, clean and telvis the sewer pipes. Empire could be engaged again, or a third party, another party could be engaged again to again go through and review them. And that'd be the way to check their work again. You know, the work that they installed, I expect anything, as far as the sewer mains go, we had the one area that wasn't addressed. Everything that was installed was more industry standard. So unless something broke or something happened, in the meantime, my, my expectation, sewer mains are all tight and not your source. But there could certainly be things outside of what we did at the project, especially at, say, the north side of the project. Because while the south side, we mostly encountered PVC pipe for connections, the north side, we mostly encountered clay pipe when making connections. So we can tell you from the right way to the house, it's probably needs replacement. We only did it once on Fourth Street, and we re-directed the services to the west. But everything between Market and Main Street, especially, is still a pipe, and certainly going to make sure that you're to INI now.
When you said, you could, there was, is there, let's say, right now, we got 80,000 gallons of flow, and that's what we have there. Okay, you know where that gets into, we kind of know where our project area started. Is, is there a measurement that can determine where the project started right now? How much, how much flow per day that is? And, and then, if 40,000, let's say, wherever that project, wherever our project starts or ends, if 40,000 gallons per day comes into there, and then another, and we know we got 80,000, so then another 40,000 gets to the fourth main. Is, is that doable? I mean, can you, can you figure that out?
Uh, the only numbers we have now about the eight monitors, maybe what are pumping. So if you're talking about figuring out.
What I'm getting at is, if we, if we know today how much for the project starts, how much, how much is coming in there? And so that means whatever where the project started to the end, that's, that's how much is, is, is there today. Okay, now, we get to the point where we get 120,000 flow a day. If we go back to that point to where, say, 40,000 is coming in there, or whenever we measure tomorrow, if we go back there, there's still 40,000 that's coming into there. Now we know that the other 80,000 is in the project area. So is there a way to, is there a way to do that? I mean.
So if, if I was sitting up and I wanted to figure out how much flow is coming from that area, is that I would have to put in a meter at the just-incoming area? So in our project area specifically, you put in a meter probably at the intersection of Elm and 93. You put in a meter at the west side of Main Street, east side of Main Street, there's a small pipe too. And then you put a meter right before it goes to the blow station. Like, there's one small pipe in an alley that we did not replace, but that should show you the total flow coming into the blow station, and we can subtract how much flow is coming from other areas outside the project area by knowing how much is incoming. So it's just a deduction of total flow minus contributing areas outside the project, what is left should be what's coming out of the project area.
So if we did, if we did do that at a couple of different points in time, which, which should be faster or simpler to do than the constant monitoring or whatever? I mean, if we, if we did that today, and we knew what our flow was, we did it a few months, whatever, the flow changed, and we, and we, we quick went ahead and did it again, you know, we'd, we'd have a better idea whether, if any additional flow is coming in, it's coming in that current project area compared to somewhere else in the system.
Yeah, that'd be essentially how you do it. You'd say this is one zone, we're going to mod it, so I'm subtracting out all the stuff you know is coming externally, and knowing what's coming out at, at the end. So you can certainly do that, that's, that's, if, if you want to look at that area specifically, that's how you would do it. If you wanted to take it one step further, you could try to delineate what's INI, what's inflow, what's infiltration, and you can do that with water sales, trying to figure out your base flow is one thing, and then figure out how much flow you get when you do get that right in there, so.
So yeah, okay, so yeah, so if we got 40 wat, if we got 50 water services in that project area, we could figure out how much, how much those 50 services have, have used, and so we know that's supposed to be there. Now the rest of this all adds to be inflow or infiltration.
And depending on your, if you want, if you have the ability to do it with your water meters, if you do monthly billing, or if you have the ability to get a.
Do monthly billing, we could, you could read anything you want to hear.
Okay, so you could also do a, put the meters in, get the, we'll get the reading of each meter right when you install the meters, right in the project, do the same thing. So you have the water usage there, and the neighborhood compared to how much water's going into the collection system, so that's enough to do. So that'll determine how much infiltration you get, which I don't think infiltration's going to be your major issue for those PVC pipe, at least. But there could certainly be a drain tile or some converse, some kind of inflow coming in from storms. You'll see those spikes when you do the monitoring, you'll see the big spike right in there, and you're probably seeing it through on your basis, right?
But I mean, and that's where, if you recall from when we, when you're, you know, you're bringing back this year and a half, our next project was going to be those 40 or 50 services, you know, but, so I think we just never followed up, well, this project we haven't closed out yet, so it's tough to move on to the next one. But I guess if we would have been paying closer attention, we would have started, we would have started this inflow monitoring last March, you know, and then made determination with, based on what's happened, okay, now, should we be starting, even if this other GM project isn't done, should we, should we be starting a service project right now? Well, now we've kind of wasted a year in doing it, but.
Yeah, no, I understand, and if, if there's concern about services, though, what, like, a lot of, well, there's different, there's different programs for it to do this, where you get some sort of grant programs. Dee's got a small city program for doing this kind of work. But you could try to just everything telvis. Have Empire come up, go clean out the house. I don't want to identify a project saying there's a problem here, and then you telvis, and you realize that there really isn't any problem, or 20% of houses have a problem.
The only thing, the only thing I'll tell you, though, in, in the past however many years, whenever, if, whenever you do that in this area, and we wait until we got 250,000 gallons of flow a day, those mains and services are so discharged that you can't, you can't see anything. I mean, then you don't know where anything came from.
Services aren't, as far as the high flow, maybe almost better to telvis those during a low full condition services, because if there's a crack, there's infiltration coming through, you're probably going to see that coming in those areas. But if it's an inflow, you're going to see a cross connection to a pipe that shouldn't be there. Now, we can telvis that from the street to the house, there should be anything connected that by, by the house.
But there, but in this, in the project area we just did, there can't be any inflow in there. I mean, you just, you just put new mains in.
But we don't know what's at the house. I mean, if someone's got their sub pump or their roof crane connected to it, we don't know that. Or the, or a foundation area, I mean, that's, that's solid, why be the house? We didn't have to go, go that far.
So, so then that should be our next inflow project, is to check those services in that area?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, so I had some INI work in the first two years that I was at SEA. I know Chris has done some. We have a team that, this is all they do, INI stuff, and they could help, like, brainstorm with you. What is your problem? What are you trying to answer? What exactly, what's the most efficient way to get the answer to you? From my opinion, the metering that you guys are talking about, the upstream and downstream into the project, are just going to, the answer there is just going to be, do you have an INI issue, yes or no? It's not going to tell you what the issue is. So in order to know what the issue is, you have to do the telvising or the smoke testing to know specifically, here's a connection we need to eliminate, here's a crack, you know, we need to repair the pipe. You, so, I, I would think for you to go.
Yeah, so the, so the metering is only going to tell us that we already know that we've got a, that we've got some, we've got something going on that we don't want to go.
Yes, but I think it would be best, like, Chris, you work with Spencer, his co-ther. I mean, I have a colleague, Spencer, and Lon, so that you guys can brainstorm. Because Spencer, like I said, this is what he does, all day, every day, INI. It's really exciting stuff.
The biggest issue is going to be services.
Yeah.
Usually are major contributor to INI, yes.
No, I'm sleepy, I haven't made them. Yeah, if you could have him go and drain them, if he had a shower out there.
I don't think we should rule anything out, though, of the issues that we've had with this project.
Right, but I'm still thinking.
I mean, I don't think we should down, I would say it's that there's some connection that's pulled apart, the way this project has gone.
Also, telvising, I mean, you know, it's needed to mark complete telvising of the main and the laterals.
And, and there's, you know, the, the, the connections to the, yeah, manhole connections could be something. One service connection, if it wasn't done right. I mean, when, when the river gets up, however high it's going to get, I mean, everything, everything is going to go to that one service connection. I mean, that's what we always found in the past. I mean, when we did our, when we, when we, when we did even our primitive in situ form, you know, whatever stuff, it would work for a while, and then you get one hole in there, any place, everything just goes to that spot, you know? It just, it, that's it, and then it all is part of, it's all part of the system, so, yeah.
So do we need a motion to do the telvis stuff, to figure that out, to get it going, or?
I think we need to do something. I don't, I don't know what the right thing necessarily to do.
That's right, Mr. Justin, that conversation with Spencer, he can throw some numbers at you to help you decide, what do you think is, what should the proposal consist of? Should it just be telvising? Should it be some metering? I don't know, maybe it's not very expensive to do the metering, and it would just help confirm something. I, I'm not the expert, but we have the experts at SEA tonight. Do you think it'd be good to get there?
But are you thinking it should be, should have been done as part of this project?
Uh, well, apparently, you know, we've got stuff in the contract that, for GM, that they've already satisfied, whatever GM has satisfied. So, but we still have got a warranty until November, you're saying? So I do think before November, we need to have Empire come back, and that's going to be on our dime, it's not going to be part of the contract. We're, we're going to have to pay it, but I think Empire needs to go back through and, and re, can recheck everything, I mean.
I agree with you, and I agree it should be sooner than later, since we're running into this November issue.
Yeah, soon.
He's already coming, so.
So if you want to, if you want a motion to move forward with that, I don't think we should wait till the next council meeting. And I'll make that a motion.
So we have a motion on the table for Lon to talk to Empire and.
And I'll talk, and I'll talk at the end.
To get it going and.
If we got to do something, we got to, we got to do something. Because, yeah, I, I mean, Empire will be booked out for. Because, yeah, I, I mean, Empire will be booked out for two months, you know, so we're going to, if we're going to have them do something. But now, and Empire, you're comfortable or confident enough that even, that they're, they're not going to be biased?
So, yeah, so just a reminder, so, uh, when Empire did their jetty cleaning, they got a jetter head stuck, made a cracking piece of pipe close to a manhole, so they came through later, and they did a fiber reinforced liner right at that location. Um, there's a pretty small crack, but you can see it's leaking water after they went through it, so, um, they did line it up. If your intent is to review their work, the camera's not going to lie, I mean, they can't say anything about that. If you want to get quotes from multiple contractors, that's.
I guess it, I'm comfortable, I, I could, I worked with Empire and I worked well enough with them, but, I mean, do you, you, what about you? Not so much, or?
Uh, we haven't, I haven't worked with Empire at all.
Other than in town here, that's it?
Right, right.
So.
They sort of, they do their own home, because they have their own work, so.
Okay, I guess Empire, you know, I think while they did Sixth Street, they did, uh, they did everything down there a couple times, you know, but unless you think that we should.
I think they'd be fine to do the work. If you want to clarify, if you want to just do sewer mains or sewer services, uh, if you do sewer services from main or outlets, then they're doing a launch camera or some other different technique they'll do by each. I will say that as far as televising, you might be paying like three, four hundred bucks per service. Uh, you could probably buy a camera yourself for about fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars, that's what community network can just bother a camera and service can do theirself, so they can televise wherever they need to, whenever they want to, so, um, that's what I would suggest comparing, so if you do forty services at three hundred bucks a piece, that, you know, you might, you might just buy yourself a camera versus having someone else do it, so I'll just add that into it if you're going to try to get it.
Okay, so if we bought our cam-, if we bought a camera, how would we, how would that work?
You, it's just a hand push cam that you put on the, you know.
But how do, so would you need a, you need a truck, or what do you, how do you?
No, it's, it's just a OREL, um, and it's got a, a display, at least we're just following them, and you put your flash drive on and record. This is, I'm talking about the spring, where.
Yeah.
The, the landowner issues.
But, but if, so, so you don't need anything to, to do it, you can just hand it to manhole and, and run it through, and run it down?
You can on main lines, but it's, you need a clobber on the main lines. But services, if there's clean out, you can push it down on the main lines.
And so how do you, do you need access to the homeowner then to, to get in the service, or you can do it right in the next thing?
We can go from the clean out to the main, we can do, because we put clean outs in correct, on, on everybody, so we can do from the clean out to the main to make sure that's good. But you can also see if there's any more water coming from the clean out into the house.
Wow, your vice person.
Yeah.
So, and now are we on good terms with the sewer or not? I mean, will they, will they allow you to run that and do the services? And we pay them?
I doubt it.
Okay.
Maybe if it's one that one, I mean, I forget what was, but it was really cheap compared to what, if you had something to put.
Okay, and start looking at that.
Maybe you should talk to the SEH expert to figure out the best way to approach this. How about in your motion?
Talk to Spencer at SEH first, and then he might have some ideas on who to get a camera from.
Well, this whole warranty thing, to me, is a separate issue. I mean, if you have uncertainties about that, like, that's really you can handle.
If there's only like forty services on the south side that you really want to check, I mean, real water, you could have a.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, is real water is, is where we're going to get it. We're going to get it for nothing.
So my motion was just that you move forward?
Yeah, move forward and figure something out, but, yeah, but, yeah, and that's, and that's, that's probably who I, I'll get a hold of Spencer, but that's who I would have called first, probably, but that's who I will call first, the real water person to get them out there.
So I second the motion. Okay, we have a motion to move forward, check out air options and do what you got to do from Randy, a second by Amy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then it, um, there's still a piece of sidewalk missing on Fourth Street, and the yield sign is still in someone's yard.
So it's, okay, I knew there's the, the yield sign.
The, the sidewalk is missing from where the post was removed.
So I will say as far as the sidewalk, those, our hope was to have them do the warranty repairs and take care of it at that time. We did send a list of warranty repairs in May, they haven't gotten it scheduled, so if there's any other concrete things, I'd like to know if I do want to get a hold of GM again, make sure it's just taken care of soon. As far as the missing sidewalk, the one thing I will comment on that is that that was not a contractor delay, that was a utility delay, so, uh, they will not do it for free, they will expect to get paid to do that work, and probably not at the contract rate, so, uh, that would have been addressed with the project had it been moved, when it was, we were told to be moved, but it took over a year for them to get both those things moved, so it's honestly a GM, it's not GM's fault, I guess, that they get done, so if you want to get done, the contractor could do it, if they're coming to do warranty repairs, but don't expect it to be four dollars per foot, so, um, if you have the ability to have it done any other way, it'd probably be cheaper, so just worth mentioning that.
So who wants to fix the sidewalk?
Do you want somebody local to fix it?
If you have, oh, oh, O'Malley's come up doing it, probably the local rate, so, you know, they do big work, so.
But is O'Malley, our O'Malley's coming in anyway?
Well, the, the repairs we identified in the spring were mostly, there was some concrete cracks and some concrete panels where they normally saw and steel them, unless we address them instead of, you know, replace, so.
So we're not going, they're not going to bring a phone in, they better watch this, this is going to be a GM, whatever you list, you're going to have, this is going to be a GM guy coming in.
Amy, I did saw and steel, they probably have O'Malley do it for them, but O'Malley's not going to show up with a premium concrete truck to do a saw and seal. So, um, if you have the ability to do some other way, it's more, I recommend it, probably cheaper.
Well, same thing with that, yield sign, I don't care, I mean, Bruce is going to try to get it moved, but, but can I get a pulse, will they get it set?
But it's been over a month.
I think we should light a fire under GM, because they haven't done the boulevard yet either in front, two oh eight, North Fourth Street.
Yep. Yeah, I was having some issues getting that done, and if they don't really take care of it, I'll make sure it gets taken care of, just, I, I do.
But what kind of recourse do you, we, we're not holding any more money, are we?
No, at this point, what we have is consented charity, just their bond, basically, if they really don't want to do it, which is not what we want to go with, but I think, I think we can take care of it if we use it, that is the threat, is to go after their consented charity, so I haven't talked to them in a little while, I do believe I should talk to them again and see if they can take care of, so I'll give it a second chance, I guess, or a third chance, I guess, to get it done, but.
Yesterday, Rod down at First State Bank, and, and you talked to him about those irrigation issues or whatever that he had down there, he, he gave me a bill for four hundred and some dollars and said that was, uh, that his contractor had to fix that because something that GM messed up or something, so, or whatever the concrete pays were.
Okay, I haven't heard a lot about it, I guess.
No, he just told me, he said he forgot about it.
Doesn't why you ran it down there?
Yeah, and somebody, he says, I'm not paying for it, and, uh, so, but again, it's done already, you know, how does, how does, how does, how's, how's, how's the bank going to get a check for four hundred and fifty dollars? I mean, and we got nothing we're going to withhold from them.
Yeah, it's kind of, I mean, it's, it's a thing with, uh, necessarily this contract exclusively, but we do have closeout requirements, and we have a disbursement statute, you have to pay it on a, then, on certain, on some condition of the project, so you could have a payment for that warranty period, the only thing you have is consented charity, um, to make sure that it's.
So do those kind of things, we just, we end up just eating them and banning them?
No, normally you get taken care of, so I, I do still want to push GM to get them taken care of, so that.
So you're going to ask GM to pay them to Rod four hundred and whatever, whatever that it was?
Yeah, if it's, if it's a warranty issue, if there's something we do anywhere, uh, I know there's some sprinklers that were, were here, the sidewalk went in, I thought they addressed it, banned the project, but if they didn't finish it correctly, you're doing correctly.
Apparently not, apparently when Rod came in and did his whatever job he did, and had to fix this kind of thing, so.
So closeout, my, my project will be high priority for me here, I think. Uh, so if there's anything else that needs to be added to that, I guess I would ask to let me know, but, um, we only, is that the yard you talked about at Fourth Street, um, that's, we had a few cracked panels, but overall things.
I'll do it here, I want to.
Okay. And chipped concrete curb specifically would be covered, that was a part of the house, that was not be done, just put in place.
So is there anything else you need from us tonight?
I just, so, yeah, when you, when you brought up, okay, we got INI stuff is one thing, the warranty issue is another, is another thing, I mean, if there are, you know, if we've got, if we've got apprehension, and, you know, and Randy's expressed that, that, uh, that the project itself may, there, there may be issues for, maybe, maybe some kind of faulty construction stuff, that, uh, now, if, if we go ahead and we pay for this extra TV work, whether it be Empire or whatever, on the main line, now, is that something then we look at and make a determination? And is it, is it enforceable to, if you, if you look at it, or whoever has to look at it decides that, yes, this is something that shouldn't be happening, because this is a new project still under warranty? So how, how do you go about and, and deal with it?
So, again, consented charity is one thing we have, and so basically, they show that they're shared, they're bonded and all stuff through the end of the warranty period, they are still held to repair any items that occurred in that time, so maybe it happens now, we see it now, they're still responsible for those repairs. Uh, yeah, you don't have a, you don't have a last check holding over them, which is, doesn't make things tougher, I think it's, uh, really not done as far, as far off completion of the project, but, uh, if you found something, uh, with our expectation of GM will fix it.
And so basically, they got to tell November tenth to fix, if you find something.
No, it's November seventeenth, whoever it is to fix it, they have until then, you have until then to identify the problem, is really what it is, what that means, so, um, past the number seventeen, they are released if there are anything that occurs afterwards, they date on terms, uh, and control anything that happens at that point. So it's essentially two years effort installation, I don't think any problems that would occur.
But, but I mean, let's say if I, if it's identified prior to November seventeenth, they still are responsible for fixing it, I mean.
Notification is the last point, they know there's an issue, and obviously if we found it in November sixteen, you're digging, I'd be, your expectation to come back in the spring, but notification.
So if something does, if there is something faulty that becomes obvious between now and, uh, middle of November, it is still their responsibility to deal with.
Okay. Well, that's all I have through the mail here, so, um, we'll keep working on the flip margin report, assume that's still the case here, do you want us to adjust anything in the project scope, or you want, or we're going to keep working on what we show right now? And maybe we should ask us for a follow-up meeting with, with James, or some council, that makes sure we're all making great direction, I think, so we did talk about a few adjustments, and I think that's something we should probably consider. And if, if we had a council meeting or if we want us to, regularly, we'll meet some other time, I don't want to take everyone's time on council meeting, you don't want to be involved in it, so.
Yeah, according to the mayor, if it's not here, your ten minutes are up a long time.
Okay. Yeah, I hate, I hate to go through all this stuff, but it takes a long time, so, uh, I think that'll, off council time. Here we go. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to do much, then, uh, the only, Jason's not here, uh, he, uh, ended up with COVID, so we're not going to do that ordinance until next time. Um, and the only other thing he would have had that I don't have in that written, in that written report is the pump house agreement that we had with this Ezra, uh, that, nothing happened with that, so he's, he's got that on hold, we're not, um, we're, we're looking for somebody else using that to substitute places, if they're interested in doing that. And other than that, I don't, very, I did include the sewer stuff, agreement stuff in here, our magic number is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand gallons a day, once we go over that, we're in the penalty. And, you know, we, we did go over that a couple days, uh, one, two, three, four days in May of this year, and that would, that would have been, that would, that would have been, that would have been, so, um, but when our regular flows out of the water tower are between seventy, eight thousand, I mean, that's, that does just tell you that, uh, we got something that's going on, and James is going to compare that to the river, the river reading flows, and maybe there was some rain events or whatever all in there, but, uh, it's just, that's, that, those numbers are kind of like they were before we did anything. And I, I didn't look, but I, I don't think the river levels were like elevation seven thirty-one, which is nothing compared to, once, I mean, we get flood years, it's up to seven forty.
Well, I would say on that pipe, it would be more like a, a crack in the new structure, more so that a joint would pull apart.
It's possible.
We, it could be a crack joint too, but normally once it's laid, it's, can't go anywhere, rather than, the only thing I didn't like about the project was watching it go down, it'd be bigger rock, they lay it out there, I think. And what I see happening with that is you can get a puncture in that BVC, but, you know, it's, down here especially, when it's so deep, that's a lot of weight down that damn pipe. I've never seen a backyard or a light pipe on something like that either.
Well, I say, what, what are we at today, we're at about eighty thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're not going to see much, I mean.
So in the whole town, it's eighty thousand gallons of water in one day.
Basically, it's water, yeah? We pump about sixty-five or seventy?
Seems like an awful lot for the population size, but maybe I'm all off on that.
No, it's.
That's, that's normal, we're up in the large hour, anywhere from weed to fifty, fifty, eighty thousand.
That's why we're not, we're not going to see much, I mean, it's going to be mostly , and brown water, toilet water, that's going to be right now.
But if you got a leak in water levels, I, you'll see that leak, because you'll see that water actually coming in.
But we're just, yeah.
But I don't know if the water did.
That's not, yeah, that's.
And you probably do have, who knows, you might have sub pumps running in there, if they're carrying.
The last time I did, uh, in-house study on sub pumps and stuff, I went, basically, I did do, that was how I did, um, Seventh Street, Third and Main Door, I turned it by, I went into every house, looked at everyone, to make sure that they didn't have sub pumps running in there, who knows if they, there, we found five of them that were going to break into the center. So we had them repump them, who knows if they ever put them back again, we don't know. Once we all go back through them all again. That was seven, eight years ago, nine years, my odds are that they're back in there.
If, if we, if we TV those services down in that lower area, can, you can tell if there's sub pumps?
Well, you can tell if there's water running, if nobody's home and there's, you know, you put a camera down there, you see water coming through, and if there's nobody home, then there's an issue somewhere, either sub pump is in there, or, or footing drain, or, you know, or just, like, you just know that there's water in it.
Yeah, but if you're not doing it the right thing, I mean.
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't do you what it's dry, I mean, it doesn't do you any good.
It's supposed to rain all day Friday for that, I hope.
Maybe, maybe not, there's water, it was, uh, other than, I'd say I, the library building and staffing, uh, they're, they're supposed to have a meeting tomorrow night, so, um, the person from the county might come down. Park trails, community building, not a whole lot's happening with the trails or anything, community building, uh, Steve is still working on, finishing out some of the, some of the fountain paperwork, but I think we're going to get the funds raised for doing it, Steve and Jeff Descharnes are talking to different. Steve and Jeff Descharnes are talking to different organizations to try to get funding for those, um, personnel. Uh, Randy mentioned something that, uh, he wanted to talk about, um, some of the street, uh, street duties and also we've talked different times about, um, whether we're gonna contract out stuff or not. And I don't know, talked a little bit, uh, with keys on personnel about some of that stuff and he was gonna bring it up tonight, but, uh, obviously he's not here. I and Amy talked a little bit earlier and, and I mean, maybe it's, uh, maybe, maybe we have a special meeting and just, and if we're gonna actually contract a bunch of stuff out, we need to decide pretty soon whether, whether we're gonna do it. And maybe we have a, a special meeting just to deal with that and, um, uh, and the, and the budget, which, which we have as part of our next meeting in September. And I know I mentioned to Amy that we were thinking, you know, I was thinking maybe the first week in Wednesday or the second week in September, but how would, I could actually get done, I think, whatever I need to get done for the budget, for other information, by the thirty-first. If, uh, the thirty-first would work for everybody.
But if you're gonna bring up a budget and you talk about contracting things out, don't you have to have some idea what it would cost?
Well, that's what I, what I'm, I'm, that's what I'm gonna try to do by then is to have all, I'm gonna have the budget kind of laid. We can't, we can't approve the preliminary budget till the twenty-first, but I'm gonna try to have all that laid out as to where we're at with personnel, where we're at with benefits, uh, what we're gonna have left, you know? And so, so that'll give, give an idea to everybody as to, you know, where, where we're at, what we, what we think we can afford. And, and then that would be, that's kind of my ideas to, then you, then you can actually approve it on the twenty-first and it becomes, it becomes your official working document. When I looked at the seventh.
But I mean, if you're talking like, if we got to drive down to Snow Memorial or whatever, you still gotta have some idea, but even if you got a budget, it might be over your budget.
Right, but I, but, but at least we'll know what our budget is and what we can, what we can put out there and then get a proposal to see if we got companies that'll, that'll match into there. But at the same time, you know, if, uh, all that, if there might be additional revenues we can have or obtain through selling equipment or doing something like that as well. So I will try to have all that laid out. And at first I thought, you know, more, the more time the better, but the reality is, so wait, if I wait till the seventh, whatever I'm gonna do, there's a football game on the first, I got Labor, we got Labor Day or whatever, I'm not gonna get a damn thing done anyway. I was much done on the thirty-first, I'm gonna have on the, on the seventh, so, uh, so it's not gonna. And when, and if we wait all the way to the fourteenth, then to me, there's really no advantage because then the twenty-first is the next, is the next meeting anyway. And if we're actually gonna allow it, then try to put the proposal together for whatever we're gonna do.
Then we have to do it someday.
Right, so.
So you're thinking like a workshop on October?
I, I'm thinking actually a special meeting so we can, we can take, if we're, if we're gonna actually start working on contracts and, uh, and do whatever, we can actually pass a motion to go ahead and do that. But at the same time, I'll have, if you want to do a budget workshop first, that's fine, but I would just do the, I would have, I would have the preliminary budget put together as, as part of, as part of that. And we, we wouldn't be ready to approve it because we, we can't do that or we shouldn't do that until the twenty-first.
But not just be a ten minute proposal, are you?
No. It'll, it'll, it'll be a while, it'll be a while.
So can we do, do that at six or?
Do it anytime, at twenty.
Six is good for me.
That works for me.
Yeah.
So.
So it's thirty first.
So August thirty first.
Do you need to advertise that? Do you need to press that paper?
Sure. Well, yeah, I'll give you a special meeting notice.
So that's August thirty first at six.
At the clock.
And is the other Jerry's proposal there or?
Oh, yeah, 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 for that one. Uh, I don't know if Jerry's talked to you guys, he's talked, they're, since their mom passed away, they're doing some estate things and doing, and doing whatever. So I was always under the impression that, that A Street was vacated between Maple and it's South Street, you know, and there's this map that these guys have, probably the exact right map, I think. I think he actually owns some of his other development outline, or somebody does. But, uh, what, what they, what he'd be proposing and what he brought up the key was vacating A Street from South Street to Maple Street, uh, which would be kind of right next to where, if you follow where the driveway with my public is and whatever. And it actually starts falling off and going down the ravine after you, after you get back about, the last three lots are, are really kind of falling off down the ravine and it comes back out and flings out to his place. So, uh, we do, the city council can initiate, if the city council initiates these things, then he doesn't need a petition, now we can, all we have to do is have a, just set a hearing for it and do whatever. So if you want to go ahead and do that, then I would, I would, I would say we probably have to, I don't think that, that, that needs, takes two weeks notice, so.
And part of it's vacated already, right?
One side of it is, but it's probably all vacated. It's just a matter of, there's probably a recorded vacation somewhere that, I mean, unrecorded vacation somewhere that nobody has, uh, that, that, that nobody, that nobody's got. I mean, I looked, I looked through whatever I had on our ordinance stuff, I didn't find anything. Uh, I looked in the files that we had, but, uh, um, his dad always claimed that there was a vacation there. I never, I never found it and it never made much difference, anything anyway, but, but there probably, there probably is one that was pulled.
This is gone now.
His, his mom lives, his mom lives up here. This would be, this would be, um, Danny's live on this corner, his mom's house was right there. Ask Hill is over there. And so his, his house is actually down in here. But so he's looking at is this, his mom passed away and this is all getting put into an estate. So they need to get it split up as to who gets, as to who gets.
Cross Maple.
So, so right now, this goes nowhere. It just goes by his mom's house. And then, and the street runs out right here. This is actually, this, what happened, South Street on the original plan is there. Um, somebody, there was a sign here at one point, somebody had one, this, this was always a cartway to this, uh, to, to Allison's Park. There was, there was field and agriculture up here.
But the order was gonna get gravity right up here. Get gravity up to the hill.
I know you're, this, this is on, this is on the south end of town.
This is over by the cemetery.
This is all St. Joseph Cemetery.
All wrong.
Yeah, I was gonna say, boy, that would have really been.
When you mentioned the school, I wasn't very attached and I was saying it up here.
Yeah, no, this is, no, this is, this is, Jerry, Jerry lives, uh, where we were, where Manny just did that thing, that's where, that's where he lived. And so that's, that's all his, but without getting, this is actually South Street, this is another messed up thing. This isn't, this was always a cartway that went into here and it went into here and they, yeah. So.
You need a motion?
Yes, yes.
I'll do that.
We have a motion for the vacation in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Good. Bills.
Financial.
All right, dividend and months in there, puts that fully fleshed out, the bills are in there as well.
So I need a motion to approve the bills.
No, I can pause.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, opposed? And old business.
Uh, just more of an update than anything, I mean, I think you, you started, did everything work out okay?
Um, I did not.
What you did?
But everything, um, yes, was fine.
Seems, seemed like it was fine. Uh, city council, Keith refilled, refiled, Mary Wento, Mary Berger Wento, Randy Teague and, um, Crystal Rose Thomas filed for city council, so there will be, um, a race. And then the other one that'll be in our district will be, uh, Morris Leeske will be against Peter Taj. I think that's, and I think, I think we must have enough elections in this, so.
Yeah, I think so too. I'm an alternate.
So we should be, we should be good.
So the old business would be a month of Bruce getting a post hole digger? Cause I see these people every day, so I have to deal with it every day.
Well, John has it. John matters, he's got a post to log here, sure, fill a hole here.
Well, it shouldn't take a month.
No.
So.
I'll, I'll technically get it tomorrow.
That's like extremely old business.
Yeah, but that sign has been a long time, you know, because he couldn't get anybody to do it. So finally I just told him that I'll.
So all I had full out of air last time.
Yeah, I did, I did admit it. He couldn't get anybody to do it and it didn't sound like GM was coming in fast, so it's just, the sign is bruised and apparently it'll get done just as fast by GM as by Bruce.
All right, new business, election judge, information item.
The committee meeting's good.
Just add your August thirty first to it, I think, um.
And September nineteenth.
Fire mission?
Fire, yeah.
The what now?
Fire mission?
September nineteenth for the fire review, yeah.
And that's at seven thirty. And the library is tomorrow at six.
Six, I think it was. I don't know, is that a committee meeting or is that just something that she called there? Does Vizki come down?
I didn't vote for the last meeting. It is a monthly meeting and that's something to do with the library. I wasn't able to open the document.
So the one, okay, the document was, it was, um, she's saying that she invited John Vizki down to have him talk about that McConie perspective, what's gonna be happening with the staffing and all of that kind of stuff. So that's, at least that's what I saw when I looked at it a while. September nineteenth, he said?
Yes.
Okay, I think I got them all. Should have a motion going now.
I'll make a motion.
The motion is second for the revised meeting schedule, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, and anything else, we'll make a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn. All right.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Wow, first time, right, just about right on.
Yeah. God, my brother got all the way to that. It's cold now.
You talk too much during.